Thank you so much. Okay, it is Monday, September 10, 2018, Callahan County District Court, though we have two children from Washington Avenue. Kristen turns to the page, she's looking at the page.
Father, somehow it's Monday morning again, and we have a new week filled with agendas and items, and we begin to check off again. Through the constancy of that, we're reminded of change, reminded of new seasons that we're stepping into, and in all of this, you are in control. We thank you for that, and we're glad for that. We ask your blessings to be upon these leaders, knowing also that you do govern in the affairs of men. We all answer to a higher power. So we ask for these leaders to be just and fair, to give them good consideration of the things that have fallen upon their purvey. We ask you to watch over them, bless their families, and we ask, Lord, as always, for your favor on our community. Thank you, Lord, for being a part of this meeting, for caring about the things that we care about. To Jesus we pray.
Amen.
We are the leaders of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am Texas attorney, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Good warning there, Daddy. First thing on the agenda today is recognition of the parents from the August 27, 2018, Callahan County District Court, and the August 13th, special confirmation for the additional available persons. So recognized vouchers to consider and act upon the approval of payment of vouchers across the county and county office for the period of August 27, 2018, through September 5, 2018. Check number 181953 through 182175, wire transfer 1124 through 1127, and 1,313, now 1,496.
As stated by the county judge, I motion to approve the six, state 1823.
Can you hear the motion, please?
Now, there's a voucher that I don't know. We're working on it today soon. And I don't know what it's about. It'd be on page 14 of 22, voucher 18218, it's for $557, private airfare. I question the value of that for the citizens of Callahan County. You know, a few years ago, the intended judge had to approve how to stay traveling. I don't know how that, how we got away with that. Anyway.
I think that was the case, Commissioner.
I should laugh.
I sure had to, when I worked for them.
No, I didn't.
Of course, that's been 10, 12 years ago.
For any, any mistake?
It should benefit the candidates, not the person.
I talked to Karen about that this morning. This is the invitation that all the officials got to go to Washington, or you can see for Texas election official name, and I guess it's just a down here, don't come back.
No, I got the invite, but I thought, oh, I'm gonna pay for it myself. Good luck, I see.
Did you get the invite?
I might give it. I hope we don't hear the public race of taxpayers in the future.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Are in hand.
Which better, say it.
All hands. Okay, insurance report to recognize, insurance done report.
Okay.
There's nothing.
Okay, alright, so recognize, they okay. Number four, Admiral Potter Events Venue District to consider and act upon Admiral Potter Events Venue District 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget. This budget is funded through 5% car rental tax and 2% rental occupancy tax. Admiral Potter Events Venue District operates and maintains total revenue through entertainment venues within the city. This budget is recommended for approval by the Admiral Potter Events Venue District Board. I would just see how many times I could say it, but I'm a district thing. So, show bond, come on up. Explain to us like you always do.
Just have an attachment for me. There's a cover letter, just turn to the second page, you have attachments. There is a summary, and as you told me, there's a lot of numbers. So, you'll start in the third column of that summary, that is the proposed budget for 2018-19, beginning with available funds for the venue district, $4,387,000. And if you look over to the right, we have that available fund deployed into three columns, that by policy that venue district has designated half a million dollars in common reserve, and then historically since the business started collecting tax, we split that money 60/40, 60% for the ANC increment, 40% for the city. And that 60/40 is just based on original bond issues, there were two bond issues to do both of those projects. The ANC balance at the beginning of the year was $1,492,000, and the city's portion, $2,394,000. The only reason the city's portion, the civic center portion, is higher, so you should spend less money spent on improvements to the facility. So back to the third column, also get the revenue stream. You have total revenue of $3,181,829,000. Of that amount, just over $1,000,000, $1,600,000 is the vehicle rental tax, the 5% vehicle rental tax that the venue district has. The hotel occupancy tax, and that's the 2%, is $2,340,000, a small amount of interest income of $35,000, and a miscellaneous income of $106,479,000. And that is money coming from the state that helps facilitate the Adacland Select Show. Total expenses are $3,354,750,000. Your largest expenditures are your annual tri-state participation, $1,119,960,000. If you look at the bottom half of that page, you can see the list, those are the improvements out of ANC Center. And when I say ANC Center, the footprint out there is a little bit bigger than that, so some of these improvements would be on the surrounding buildings. The ANC management contract, $328,248,000, that's just to pay for operations of that facility, $60,000 for property insurance. The Civic Center management contract, $398,000, again, operations for the venue district-funded portion of the Civic Center, which is on the north part of the Civic Center. Event development, $355,609,000, and those are for events associated with the ANC Center. Physical agency, $3,400,000, that's payment to the city emerald to do the main, the booking for, for the venue district. And civic center improvements, $200,000,000, and the events district debt service, $864,679, which is the two outstanding bond issues. For total expenses of $3,354,750,000, leaving reserves of $4,214,000. And again, that's split three ways, half a million in common reserves, $1,037,000 for the ANC portion, and $2,677,000 for the city portion. And if you would like to load up the second to last page of that... I think it's the last page here. Second to last page, your hand out, if you want to look at the event development, $255,609, 000, that's a listing of the events that are supported by the venue district. Thank you, Michelle. Any questions, comments?
Very good. I'll see what you do.
I'm going to, will you have questions?
Oh, I've got the interviews, Carrie Wright is here.
That's okay, I know maybe it's president of the venue district.
Carrie, if you want to say something.
I'm just, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to have you.
Any questions?
Are we pretty solid on keeping the Adaclon?
Adaclon, no, it won't. This was the last year.
This is the last year.
Yeah. We're working on another event with AQAJ, right, the event period last year, large.
Where are they going?
Uh, Adaclon's board board.
Remove that we approved the Admiral Potter Events Venue District 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget.
In a second.
Done.
In a second. Motion in a second, all favor of your opinion. Four, two. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Okay, number five, district clerk's records are filed, please to consider and act upon document district clerk, Callahan County District, 2019, our budget. Caroline here?
She's not here today. I'm there for her.
Okay, did you want to speak today?
Um, it's just the annual filing, um, for what we collect these for, and I just wanted to add that $3,000 of that goes for our Odyssey.
Thank you, motion in this.
We're going to, please, another official court, three of our staff, 12, 19.
Second. Okay. I have a motion in a second, all favor of your opinion. Zero, thank you very much. Number six, court nights account, to consider and act upon establishment of a separate checking account for the purpose of accepting donations and paying expenses for the TBTC host court night. Mr. Judge.
Yes, I'm in the process of starting to put together donations for our host court night, which will be April 23rd, the first night of the West Texas Judges and Commissioners Association Annual Conference Year in Amarillo. Been trying to figure out where to put the money. And I talked to Love Academy, who's posted this several times, and what they have done is, is established a separate checking account that the monitor has kept in their office and balance. However, the checks are written and signed by two commissioners. And so, Carrie has visited about this, and she's agreed to do that if the court so chooses to establish that account. The other day, the Panhandle Judges and Commissioners gave us $2,000. We're, we're on our way, we need 15,000. You know somebody with 15,000?
Okay.
So we need that.
I need a motion.
I move to approve of establishing a separate checking account for the purpose of accepting donations and payments for TBTC host court night.
I have a motion in a second, all favor of your opinion. Sorry, it's a habit, I want to say right hand. Say yeah. Okay, number seven, sheriff and constable fees, this is the third time this has been on here now, so we're good?
Yes, I just wanted to get them all together so that whenever we're searching in the future, you know.
Okay, on the same page, or the pages?
Yeah, same pages. And there was actually, from the very first one, I had left a couple of words out, so they're cleaned up now.
Okay, so it's good to go.
I move to approve the pages listed.
Carrie. I have a motion in a second, all favor of your opinion. Four, zero, thank you very much. Number eight, district clerk position, to consider and act upon the establishment of an assistant supervisor position for the criminal division in the district clerk's office. This is Caroline's baby. She has come to court several times to ask for this, but budget is done, it's a done deal. I will let one of you speak, if he wants to do that.
Okay. In Caroline's absence, I told her I would come before I was morning about this division. When this offer started out, although, we wanted to use that entire position to give raises to 24 staff, and forego whatever the county was giving, not have those. And in the beginning, it wasn't approved during that budget, while we were asking with the budget which we did. And then, a couple weeks later, as you know, it was wiped out, and then the motion was to not completely, I mean, position position. Of everything that has gone through, the one, I mean, we wanted that and to raise three other positions up to a, we have three positions that, that don't raise up to what, a full-time deputy clerk man. But in considering everything, that we're not even considered, you know, we're worried about, but the assistant supervisor position is a very deep need, especially for the criminal department. They did in July mandated to go e-filing everything, in which they were in the condition of, I mean, we have been for a while, but not the criminal department. And there is an individual within the criminal department that has just worked side by side with Crystal during this whole transition, and also through the Odyssey transition. And she's been doing this for quite some time. It is the only department that does not have a supervisor position. So we were gonna not add a new position, but just take her and add that salary, so she would be earning what the super assistants, I'm sorry, in the other two departments make. After that first commission board, we were very excited that she was going to get that position, we felt very good about. And then when it was taken, you know, wiped off, the budget, we were kind of, you know, went, okay, how can we compensate her? She's doing it at the level that she is making now. And I feel that she is very deserving of this position, that the criminal department, like if Crystal's gone, they will have to text her or call for while she's on vacation, because although we have a very good staff, there's not anybody that wants to take the responsibility, let's say, or not want, of making a decision that's, you know, that may make them look bad, or they may make the wrong decision. And also, if Caroline, not Caroline, but Crystal's not there, you know, we have a question for the criminal department, we're like, okay, well, we'll go to one girl or whoever's there. And in this instance, the reason we want, first of all, her being deserving of this, because she has worked so hard, come in on this offer, to make sure that things are getting done, that we have somebody that can go to, that can make a decision. And even the girls that worked within the criminal department can say, okay, well, let me send you to someone, she's the assistant, she can help you, or even the court staff, you know, a judge or a court court manager. Of everything that we presented during this budget, in my opinion, this, this position right here is the most important. And in giving up that full-time position back to the county, I mean, this was what we wanted, you know, to move that money, a portion of that, I don't know what it is, can't tell, $5,000, something, that we would lack that position with the hopes of making some money to be able to pay this individual for the work that she did.
We're going to defer to the court, especially at that particular meeting, a lot of this was articulated, but seemed like we, I don't know, we got on the dead foot, not, or it was presented in a way that was not initially what you perceived that you wanted, that got the off track. So, I just want to listen to the court here from them, where do you think we are?
I won't tell you exactly where we are. It came about, everyone was gonna, don't ever get to do that.
Right.
And then something happened, Mr. Carrick took all of it off the board. So we started, we voted on it, we voted on that, and it gets to 2% plus 12.
Right.
Okay. At that particular meeting on August 13th, your boss stood up right over there, off camera, but on microphone, and said, never mind, I won't need that position. That is exactly why I made the motion I made, to strike that position that my candidate has. That's why I did go back and watch the film.
I did.
Okay. So you heard what she said?
That's why, that's why my, I'm not saying that it was the right thing, I'm just saying, she said to do it, so I did.
And then the budget is done, and now it would cost, what would the, the bottom line budget would, would increase by how much, Carrie?
Well, you can't change the bottom line, this would have to be a budget amendment now, so it's not an emergency, it can't lock it down, it's a balance, you would have to take it over, count my contingency.
And what's the amount?
Right at $6,058,88,000.
That's just for the increase to bring that position.
Correct.
You'll have to reinstate the position.
Correct. And that includes the pressure of events as well.
That's what's confusing to me, is that we wanted to raise the one position that's already here, and do away with that position, which was quite a bit less than that, what you're asking for, is completely reinstating the whole position.
That's what she asked for, to restate the whole position, as her motion, that was her agenda.
Which was not initially stated as the intention.
I mean, the, the person that we want to give this to is an existing employee, right? Of, you know, maybe she's doing this job.
And she is.
Doing the job. And...
But wants to be compensated for, like the other assistant supervisors in practice.
And honestly, I'm the one that was Caroline, asked her about this, because she said, well, we can get the position, just not paid, you know, I don't think that's fair. And honestly, you know, Caroline, we, all these girls, including myself, this will be our third district clerk that's coming in. And we've been able to maintain a smooth transition between Cindy and Caroline, and now with Carling. And it's because of these women, and the people that we have working in that.
I'm not just counting that at all, I totally understand that.
And I just think that when, and maybe I should have spoken earlier, but it really is a key position in our department, in our office.
So, Carrie, what, what's about, what's about that?
I'll put it out there.
Decide, whatever you want to do.
Well, it wouldn't be fair.
Yeah.
We want to, we have to, as an order, follow to that.
I'm concerned about the dominoes following, and then we got the other groups that wanted to be able to, like the constables and that.
No, this doesn't have anything to do with that, no.
Are you sure?
No, we're not sure, not sure of anything, but I don't think it's the same, it's apples and oranges.
I, I must say that when we presented this back in July, it was just a regular commissioner court agenda item. And then we were asked, would you wait until budget? And so, you know, we said, okay. But at that time, we were hoping to give her that position that day. But once we waited for budget, and it was approved, we, we, you know, told her, well, it's gonna have to be till.
So how long has she been doing this, repositioning the ballot rate?
I'm not, I mean, she's been here for probably 10 years, and she's been through the whole process of the conversion from the legacy system to Odyssey, so probably almost three years.
She's the one that you go to, excuse my...
And she's the most...
She's gonna be assistant to the, to...
Assistant, under, under Crystal.
If this goes through, will she be paid the same as the other assistant supervisor?
Yes, sir.
I think we ought to be fair. I don't want to open a can of worms like this.
I think that can's been open, but...
Carrie, what was through that process, how did it go, if we decide?
It'll just be a budget amendment, it'll just add, add budget to their salary infringement and, and no reduction to your contingency.
Can we do that today, or in the way from next time?
Uh, it says take action, I think that you could order to do budget amendment and increase that position.
I'm afraid that, you see anyone wearing the, if it was, if Carrie meant, if I'd be compensated for it, we would, if we sort of aired on some terminology or some verbs that would be expressed, then I can get a little bit.
You can get a little, I can get a little bit.
So, if the commissioner, if I make a motion, is anything that he would...
I think I made my comment, that I hope, that I opened up a can of worms, and I'm gonna have, I have this every, every meeting.
This is unique, and I appreciate you explaining it in a way that we can understand it better.
The swing that it's presented to us in this meeting was to reestablish the full position.
There's not a, a position called assistant manager.
No, the one that was taken.
Oh, well, no, we don't, that's incorrect.
Okay, so, give me some line to draw back motions. So, what I would be making a motion to, amend the budget, district clerk, to approve...
Would it be appropriate to say to upgrade a deputy position to assistant criminal supervisor?
Did you get that due?
We did.
We did.
Did you have it written down before you made the motion?
Yes, you did, you did listen.
For how much?
Out of the contingency, the amount of...
Six thousand, regular, regular range, and $6,000 for contingency.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All favor of your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number nine, this position are forfeited, probably to consider and act upon this position of all or forfeit the property 2,067,000. My grandson needs cars. Our 350, bin number, whatever, I'm not reading my best.
The whole last thing, the public, they want, they have the compartments in it, their comfort room, you can't sell them, you just have to, what we able to use is around the district attorney's office, deciding that they would not take theirs with, of the cost of, they would use the, sort of, to, 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 to,
You're saying it's against the law.
What it did to was against the law. It's already fashioned back.
I move that we, that obviously, forfeited property to 2,067,000, our 350, by the sheriff's part, and the DA, or just the sheriff?
Both.
And the DA.
Aye, sir.
I have a motion in a second, all favor of your opinion. Number 10, amendment of hospital cost sharing contract, to consider and act upon the approval of an amendment of Callahan County's cost sharing contract, in North West Texas. of an amendment of Potter County's cost sharing contract with Northwest Texas Healthcare System to reflect revision and compensation for the Potter County patients considered to be corrupted to fifty thousand.
Our current contract is thirty five thousand and hospital equipment is paid at about in, correct, the number seventy five is what the change is. Yeah, we just want to upgrade it to the current rate.
Remove approve the amendment of Potter County's cost sharing contract with Northwest Texas Healthcare System. Second.
Have a motion and a second on the favor. Number eleven, open house, open house, open house, open house or open house?
Yes.
Okay. To consider enacted upon the approval of a proposed agreement for a regulation of the following civil action case number one oh six five four five A C B in the forty seventh district court of Potter County, Texas, Potter County versus the open house.
This would be a settlement of the superpower against the general defense in nowhere of courthouse restoration. Doc check with the documents.
I'm going to receive this check or have it?
Uh, checks in the bank. I spoke with the attorney last week and he was actually living in his office, so he was sort of disorganized to go. He said it would get over this week and get the sudden settlement agreement and issue taken to us straight away.
I think this is the best we're gonna be able to get.
It's the best one.
Let's get this out of our hair. I move we approve the proposed agreement for resolution of the civil action case number one oh six dash Europe number five forty five dash A dash C B between Potter County and Richard D. Open House. Second.
Have a motion and a second on the favor. Four zero. Number twelve, payroll deduction request to consider enacted upon request by the sheriff to approve participation in the benefit package offered by the combined law enforcement association of Texas for payroll deductions. Sheriff?
Well, yeah, I'm good. I definitely guarantee he's not looking to have personal there anymore than Randall or the C.
Oh, okay.
So he also forces clean. Please. Commissioner.
I didn't explain what clean is, but it's basically just that it's health officers.
Combined law enforcement, thank you for having me here, signing in Randall and Potter County Honor to be here. And I also work part-time for clean as a region type right up in the panel. Maryland, Odessa, up to Oklahoma, and then New Mexico to the other Oklahoma. So it's a big area. Part-time is kind of difficult. We take care of our Texas officers, over twenty-three thousand clean members. The big thing that people concentrate on is the legal representation for critical incidents, which unfortunately in Texas, I've lost track this week, I believe, we're pushing over eighty officer involved shootings alone in Texas. And that doesn't include critical incidents, pursuits that lead to problems, in custody deaths, whether it's in the back of the patrol car or jail. The clean offers legal representation for those critical incidents, no matter what they are.
Who's that saying?
Combined law enforcement associations of Texas. I do have benefit sheets of no vaccine that they're working on. So there's a lot of other things besides the legal, but that's the thing that catches people's attention is the legal representation of the accidents, critical incidents. We offer fifteen thousand dollars accidental death of this member man. First of all, the dues are thirty dollars a month and that's statewide, so three hundred and sixty dollars a year, which is very, very reasonable for attorney representation if you need that. There's a lot of other stuff we're getting legislation, getting the correct kind of legislation for our Texas peace officers and corrections, and that's one of the fortakes of clean. It's the only association in Texas that represents corrections officers in addition to field patrol police officers. So we take seriously representing our corrections officers because if a critical incident happens in our, I mean, it very likely happened in our justice as well. Lots of those, there's training is a big part of the terrible press, which the peace officers and our fighters, I believe, also use hell of a press all the time on the street train with policeone.com to keep our officers trained to the point that we're not in situations that we kind of bring on ourselves. So we're big on training. Lots of other benefits, discount through La Quinta, which forces you to go to the Peace Officer Memorial Foundation. So those of us who have been to Austin, on the northwest corner is the Peace Officer Memorial. They help take care of that. That's a wonderful tribute to our Texas peace officers, so it's basically.
What's your petition, participation rate on your officers? How many, how many are actually, do all of them participate or is that a selected deal?
I'm not sure I understand. There's twenty-three thousand Texas members.
Just like.
Oh.
Yeah, part of the police. Was it voluntary?
Yeah, just voluntary.
Yes.
And what we're asking is to be capable of that.
We're gonna end it, pass.
We're gonna with our.
Our competition, yes. And quite honestly, as long as they have the protection and representation, I want them to choose some kind of protection even if it's a competition.
Can you say competition? Let me explain.
TMBA is Texas Municipal Police Association and FOP is Frontal Order of Police, and I believe that there's some other national associations that they belong to, and I don't have information on those. TMBA, Texas Municipal Police Association, and FOP have actually merged in Texas. I don't fully understand that they're, they're kind of merged ownership together, so it's my understanding that, and I'm asking for it and I'm saying, is that it's already approved payroll deduction for those.
So is the officer's discretion with, with the social life just being?
Well, Ted is a former member of clean. Can I borrow this?
This is just an issue of payroll, thing to do about payroll.
Census policy.
I don't, I don't, not a problem for any. Now, we, we would just have to set up a, get a ledger account line and set up a code and get it set up in the system.
Available, available option. I'm gonna move to approve the request that members of the police departments, you know, going to take a look. Second, program.
Motion and second on the favor. Four two, no, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number thirteen, Bushland ISD, consider enacted upon proposal to Bushland ISD regarding installation of one or more traffic control devices in Bushland Middle School.
Hello.
We're back.
Jim, I did not bring my PowerPoint this morning, so. First of all, I want to say thank you for making that a one-way, yes.
It worked, didn't it? I sold the news and everything, everybody was happy.
Everybody was happy, I just maybe didn't find the man.
Yeah.
But for the most part, it's working pretty well. On the south side of the middle school is where the bottlenecking mountain. It's a private road. It's right past the football field there at the middle school, and Dennis Gray gets out there every morning and they're obstructing. We did not do it this morning. I wanted to see what it looked like, and he said it looked better than it did last year. What I, what I'd like for you to consider is what's going in out there. We have sixteen hundred homes coming in. And if you, at the, how was your church, was that the community meeting we had, it was pretty volatile at times, but there's a lot of homes, a lot of homes going in out there, and we really feel like it's gonna be a mess if we don't get out in front of it. So I'd like for you to consider possibly putting in a traffic lot or something.
Where we can have these places.
That's not your, it's not your expertise, is it?
No, we don't have any.
Okay.
We're, we're getting at seven hundred and twenty-fifth, that's working pretty well right now. The road that, it's on Simmons Road, it goes, it's a private road, it comes out of Bushland ISD property, and it comes out on Simmons, and we have stops on the Bushland side, and then the development across the street is going in, there are stops on there. But it's hard getting in if you're trying to turn left to get in, and it's almost impossible to get out without the instep.
That's not, no, it is, that's a candy road, isn't it?
You talking about?
At that point, it's a candy road, cinnamon road.
Yes.
It's a candy road, so it's not.
South of the interstate is a candy road. Yeah, south of the interstate all the way up to, you'll see the sign that.
Yeah, it's Potter County. Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, how can we find that? Does anybody know what the cost was? Anybody know?
Well, I just haven't.
He just happened to say.
Uh, this came from the city of Amarillo, when they're doing one here in Amarillo, of course, it's gonna be different out there. Their cost, you're ready, was a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for a stoplight.
Well, Dennis Gray's not very tall.
And I don't know, we, we talked to, about temporary lights, possibly looking at that, just anything to help with the traffic. Well, when I looked at the temporary portable lines, I, I didn't even know what they made of, but I couldn't find anything online as the yellow, green, and red, you know, that you could stick out there during school hours or whatever, like the speed limit and signs or anything that they have. I couldn't find anything on them, so I was assuming it had to be a permanent stoplight. And then, who's gonna maintain it once we get it up? Because like I said, all, all we can do is change bolts and then to some other other stuff.
Oh, I'll do, I'll do the switches, whatever.
Yeah, the rest I don't do, I maintain it or get it, because we don't have anything about as far as program in there.
How can we learn more about it? We think we need more information before we say yes.
Absolutely. Well, the reason I know what little I do is because I used to work in that department in the city, but right now, a friend of mine, he's over that department, and I'm sure you talked to Michael, did you? Is that who you talked about?
Yeah, this is what he's saying.
Yeah, he called me back and asked me about the whole situation. I told him, yeah. And I said, well, I don't know. He said that that's what they charge you whenever you probably have to have it contracted out, because they don't put anything outside the city limits as far as installing it out there, so I don't know what that costs for the people. That's what they cost them, but they're getting the city.
So we don't have to take it ex-bond, that's included?
Uh, no, they won't do it either. You have to get a private contractor to put it out there, because it's the county road. The state is about a hundred feet south of the highway or so, and it's county for about a mile or two, whatever it is, and it's Randall County. So in order to put it up, you have to like contract it out.
It's our responsibility to.
If it were to be under us, we are light, I guess, if it's county. Like I said, we don't have it.
It does benefit Randall County also, presence of Randall County.
I know, I was gonna say, this could give them involved in this.
I don't know if they'll even go for it since it's way down in Potter County's side. They don't like your money.
Yeah, I think they don't like it.
It's a mile, it's a mile, mile to thirty-four.
But the problem is, is you have a lot of those kids that live in Randall County, and that's, that would be my pitch, I mean, it's worth at least going to that one, second day. But I don't, I don't know, the, the Florida boys, text out of, David was talking, that he's seen some down there around the loop that are on the trailer that have all the red, trailer on, and I don't know what those college, what they're doing groups or what have.
Might be something to, might at least to look at and find out what the cost would be.
Because I, I honestly, I think you can get by with it, the thirty minutes in the morning, thirty minutes at night, not thirty in the afternoon.
And really, the.
And play back on flash.
The afternoon's not, not, nobody's trying to get to work. In the afternoon, everybody's dropping kids out, everything's pretty smooth in the afternoon. The morning is where the bottom ends, and people are upset. A lot, a lot of those people have kids or dropping off, a lot of them are just trying to get to work.
Of course, you have to realize that if you do the trailer, then somebody will have to analyze and slide into it and tear it up and it's no more.
Well, you're still happy.
Well, just honestly, I mean, I can't put, you can't put anything around it if you just stood it as a trailer. It wouldn't be a permanent structure.
I think we needed some more information, but it certainly is our responsibility.
Can we do that for us, Josh?
I can, well, I'll just go to the city or text, because like I said, I live online, I never, I never, I asked Michael about it, he said he didn't know, but the sheriff's installed, so there's gotta be one out there somewhere. And you'd have to probably, maintenance trip taken down. It might be a lot easier to have somebody tie it.
It's there forever.
I can say, I can talk to Michael about it again and see if another contractor is willing to.
I think that I have a question about at least the contract.
Yeah.
How many, how many kids are living in Randall County? Might check that out for us, give us a motion so that we can, so all these people from right in your county that go to the school.
I know that outpost community is all in Randall County. We, we have a list of the, uh, but I'll see if I can find it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I think that's, I don't think that's it. No. Yeah, as a superintendent stated, I did attend their community meeting. There is a lot of feeling about how they want their community to, to develop, and it's gonna continue to develop, so this is not gonna go away. So I hope we can find some figures and come up with some kind of answer. All right, may I ask a question? Those developers out there, would they have any responsibility for this? I was.
You'd have to ask somebody legally, but if they do.
I mean, they're putting all those houses out there and causing an issue that we need to deal with.
I know, I didn't show up to the community meeting, so. But I did, so.
May I mention that question?
Okay. We'll need some more information later.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number fourteen, vehicle purchases to consider enacted upon purchasing the following: two twenty-nine Chevrolet two-five-hundred HD Silver Rabbit four by four crew vehicles in a total amount of ninety-one thousand and eight dollars utilizing back home contract number five-two-one-dash-one-six from the October twenty-fourth. Funds vested in twenty-seven twenty-two eighteen. Dicky, you speaking on this one?
I have a big question, I just kind of know, I think this is for my understanding, money for a move for this one, is that correct? So there's, these guys can move out of the city, it's a risk, maybe it's a pass.
Yeah, this is the biggest. These are the two command vehicles, please.
So what are the assistance, the, you can get it in yet?
The move that we approve is purchase of two twenty-nine Chevrolet two-fifty, twenty-five-hundred, excuse me, HD Silver Rabbit four by four crew vehicles. They're totaling ninety-one thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Have a motion and second on the favor. Four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number seventeen, surplus property disposal, consider enacted upon disposing the attached list of items that did not sell at auction. Is this is for surplus, we just did an auction in the Santa Fe subway section, and these are items that didn't sell, so I expect you to have approval so we can go make these. Okay?
It's probably the tax list of items that did not sell at auction.
Okay, have a motion and second.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Point zero. Thank you. Number eighteen, vehicle transfer, to consider enacted upon transfer of vehicles as follows: Potter County number two-one-four-zero-eight twenty-fourteen Chevrolet two-five-hundred HD from sheriff's office to purchasing, and Potter County number one-seven-zero-eight-three two-thousand-five-four F one-fifty Chevrolet to purchasing in auction.
We have an opportunity to rotate out two thousand and five to a newer model, two thousand and fifteen, so I'm asking the court to go ahead and be approval to let us go ahead and take possession of the sheriff's office's two thousand and fourteen, that would be a big one of our options.
Move two, proposed vehicle transfers presented.
Second.
Motion and second on the favor. Four zero, I approve. Number nineteen, tax rate, please for year twenty-eighteen from nineteen, conduct a public hearing on the proposed tax rate of point six-eight-five-zero to four-one-hundred dollar per worship of this figure, and not over one from nineteen, and to announce Tuesday, September eighteen, five-thirty, Department County Commission Court, as the date in place for second final of the proposed tax, and to announce Monday, September twenty-fourth, at nine in the Department County Commission Court, as the date of time in place for adoption of the tax rate by the Department County Commission Court. Does anybody here, this is the, that's it. Any public comment at all? There is none. So we have to be, can we, or not? Number twenty-one, I would be considering next one of the hall of office, engine office at Pennham, Pennham, and the special program, and the office seventeen. She just got here.
She was the Florida's program assistant. She just, she's program assistant, a year ago.
Oh, okay.
She got the. I move we approve the employment item as you stated. Sir.
A motion and second on the favor. Number twenty-one, Potter County Project Nicholas, do you have anything today?
Give you a little update on green space.
Okay. Is it gonna be green?
It's gonna be brown right now.
It's a color.
Then it's a color. Do you have a haircut?
Black, I mean, haircut.
Looks good.
So they should be done land-sawed sometime this week is what they're hoping for. They just have to be done, I think about either the month is there, under the final date. All are different places. Most strip as of last week was fifty percent finished. I think that's, that's why irrigating and doing the sawing.
I did tell you that Beth Duke wants to put one of those horses out there inside of it.
I don't want it to be, I mean, it was tall.
She has an extra one, she wants to put it out there. I don't see one on.
Sure. Just, just wanted to know before you show it.
It won't eat much grass. Oh, yeah, it doesn't make a mess at all.
Uh, sidewalk over there, what else? This is.
Will this horse have a fucking gun seal?
Uh, no, it's not gonna have a fucking gun seal, it was one that she's had in storage for a while, and she just wants.
Are you gonna accept the color of all that?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know what color it is.
Had a theme on it.
Should we have any idea with it?
I have no idea. It's, it's a horse, it's more like, it's more like it's in a head.
There's a bunch of them throughout the town.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, we're.
I think strawberry room.
If they're fixing to start, I don't know what number of this is, but it's not sure if it's on, how it's gonna pay work again, because right now it's between Larry or Sue and Buster builders. That's all. Other than that, I think it's.
All right. Thank you. Number twenty-two, jail report, six hundred and seven people in our jail today, eighty-seven of those are females, with five males transporting children, eighty-five percent of those are felons, nine percent are misdeemed. County insurance side, who's ready? Number executive session, do the items for next time?
Second. I just, I won't be here for this thing, so.
If you're here, Chris, can you hear it? Does it be yours? Yes, I see, not gonna be back. She's gonna be gone. Okay, before I make the final announcement on number twenty-six, um, I have one more thing I need to say. Uh, it's a deep, deep regret that I have to announce that Dicky Sheldon will be leaving us on September twenty-first, uh, she's going to another job, and I cannot tell you how, I'm, I'm happy for you, but at the same time, I'm not happy for us, so that could go find somebody, I wish it was, and I'm telling you, I've been here, just tell you how long I've been here. I've been here, I've been through, what do you say, in something? Thank you. Long before the, the sheriff. So I can honestly tell you that they're all good, but no one is gonna throw up as you, and you came in at a time when we were starting a new project for the LVC, and you just took it and you did what you can do, I appreciate it so much, and we're gonna be sure to do it, no question.
Thank you.
And thank you, Trent. Okay, number twenty-six announcement, we have a lot of adjournments today, we, or you ever else would like to go or take a tour of the INHEV, so we're gonna leave with, we have a whole hour for you. Who knew it would be over this fast? Maybe we could give him a call. Anyway, so if anybody wants to go, you'll need over at that in Johnson, I think you got one of those. Yes.
The facilities.
Yeah, yeah. Jerry. Jerry, I'm down. So, so anything, anything else? Nothing else, we are.